Do you like to hook myself in here, please?
Dear Governor and Father, we thank you for the sending together decisions. We ask you to bless this community and help us make the right decisions that will benefit our community. We just ask you that we keep you in our hearts and in our lives each and every day of our lives. And just send it through.
Thank you. All right. First item is to approve the public hearing limits and the regular meeting limits from December nineteenth. Does everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yes, I do.
Are there any additions or corrections, revisions that need to be made?
Like motion reads, yeah.
Stephanie makes a motion, so if it's a second, Michael seconds? All four? All opposed?
Left board, you're out of the vote.
Well, I was no longer, like, because I needed to do my writing. After a bit, they had, "Don't start."
The Chamber of Commerce has asked for us to close some streets for the concert in April. Stephanie, do you have some information on that?
I think it's gonna, the way I can look at it, I can, I can bring it back to the board, but I think it's gonna be Jackson, the front part of Jackson. The side streets is First and Second Street, and the back road's Vivian. I think that's what I think the roads are. So, and that's the one that I said I want to close them down to thorough traffic. You know, there'll be workers back and forth and stuff like that, but I don't want people parked around the rodeo arena trying to listen to the music like that. Because I just, that, you know, the kids running around and all that kind of stuff.
Is that parking over there around where they have the one where they?
Yes, hopefully that's gonna be parking, you know, so that'll be parking. So, but we'll come in from the other, you know, like, the other direction or something. That is gonna be on the nineteenth, twenty first.
I'm familiar with the two. I'm, I'm trying to think on Vivian, is there a house right there?
Uh-uh.
Set of hands, no.
Set of hands.
That's what it was. I knew there was something that was.
There's a house, Garrett's got a house, but he can come in from the side right there. And he don't really, you know, there's people around there that, sure, I'm gonna put a thing in the paper, but they're not wanting people parking in the driveway, you know, except maybe friends and family. So, I'll put a thing in the paper, plenty of time to let them know that the roads will be closed and where they can park, and then we're gonna have people helping to park. You know, we're gonna have like a mule with a trailer on it, you know, busting people kinda back and forth and, you know, different stuff like that. Like, where we can, you know, we can park them around the square, you know, by the chamber office, bank parking lot maybe, you know, stuff like that. You know, uptown somewhere, you know, if we have to. So, but they're not parked all around the sides of the streets. That's a chance somebody get ran over or, or get run over or something.
Are you gonna have ambulance checks?
For real?
Hmm, probably not. I wouldn't think we'd have ambulances on standby. I mean, we'll have them on standby, but I think they can be.
Don't have to be on site?
I don't think they have to be on site.
Truly, I won't think that.
Hopefully, we won't have to have them on site, you know, we're gonna have plenty of.
It is Stonewall County.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Not that bad, it's reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, we won't, we're not gonna have them on site, but we'll have them, you know, just as usual. But we should have plenty of cops and stuff, all that kind of stuff there. I've talked to the high school sergeant over there, some of the people, plus all of our own people here. And then that promoter guy says that they come with some security details, so, yeah.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve closure of streets? Does it make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Michael seconds? All four? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number five, consider bid submissions for leasing the Astramont Lake property. Before we get to that, I wanna discuss, um, if y'all want to postpone opening them. Um, the way I understand, um, we have two council members that submitted bids or espouse, espouse a council member, and so there's a conflict of interest there. So Billy would be the only one that could vote on it tonight. So, um, if we want to accept the bid, that wouldn't be an issue, but it depends on how y'all feel about it. You certainly have, would wanna speak, talk about it, but obviously, there's conflict of interest in voting, so I wanna clear that up before we go any further.
Well, we need to.
I'm not opposed to taking the highest bid, I mean.
Well, that's, that's the deal, is on this particular situation, it's like selling one of the vehicles for the city. We wouldn't sell the truck, if we had two bids for one for two and one for five, we wouldn't sell it for two, we would sell it for five. This particular situation is open for discussion to accept or not to accept any bid that is applied because of y'all's opinions of what it could be used for.
Exactly, it's not the highest bidder.
And that would be, um, to the point where we'd have to agree to take the highest bid in order to open the bids, and it would have to even be the same, almost to the point, uh, when, if Chris is here, because it would be, if you wanted to accept the highest bid, you wanted to accept whatever bid he decided to at that point, and then it would fall the route to break the tie, to, to go that direction, whichever direction it's been. So, you know, most of the time in this situation, you take the highest bid. That's what you do on this thing. But I understand too, that there's so many different options that we're looking at. Some benefit, some don't. Uh, using a property for hunting lease doesn't benefit us other than the highest bid. Using it for some other purposes could benefit the city. So, and so we're discussing this, but Michael and Stephanie can't even discuss this conflict of interest for that. So I'm, I'm talking to you, pretty much, because it's, it's your vote to decide, pretty much, whether we take highest bid or table it.
More, think of it. Need a second? To do anything with bids? So we need to, if they have to abstain, then we need a second?
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna discuss that. I think we need to call a meeting as soon as we can then, because it needs to be, you know, it needs to be settled.
If it's a special meeting, then all, everybody has to be here by the morning.
Because it needs to be settled.
We're gonna have some budget issues discussed, so we'll probably have a, a special meeting before next regular meeting anyhow, so.
Okay, I guess we can table it.
So motion table?
Yeah, second. I may drop you a second.
Well, I think, too, I don't know what the bids look like or anything, but, um, there's some, if they're not addressed right, that can be thrown out. Because it, it definitely says in directions of the thing, it has to be addressed to the city's, city secretary. And if they're not addressed and dated and timed.
Well, I don't, we don't see them, so we don't know.
Well, that's what I said, but that's, you know, if you can look at them, you know, some of them can be thrown out.
Well, we, but we can't look at them right now. Yet they ought to be opened at the same time, so I wouldn't know, we wouldn't know who they're addressed to till we opened it. Then yes, we could throw it away.
Would have to be on the envelope.
No, not necessarily.
It says in, it says in, no, it says in the directions that it has to be addressed to the city secretary.
If it was.
And on the envelope.
Since we're table, then we'll make sure we, we take care of it properly when we do address it. Billy makes a motion, Michael seconds, is there any further discussion? All four? All opposed? Stephanie opposes? Motion carries. All right, um, so we do not need to consider any resolutions, so I guess we just need to table that also. Item number six.
Do I have to make a formal?
The resolution is for the mayor to sign it, to sign the lease.
But it's only in the event that we take action on number five, so do we have to make a formal motion?
No action, no action. Item number seven is order city election for May the eleventh. We have three council positions that will be open, um. It's not applications, um, is that?
Application. Application for a decision on ballot, a decision on ballot.
Will be available starting January thirty first through March first. Um, it'll be open March first till five o'clock. Early voting will be from April twenty ninth to May seventh, um, here at City Call, from eight o'clock to four thirty. We are required to have two days that we're open twelve hours, and so we need to decide on those two days. And I think Tanny said last year it was the first day and the last day, is that correct?
That's what I think, last year.
Is there any problems with that?
No.
Is there anything else besides, now, Tanny, that need to be discussed?
You got all your stuff ordered and everything, I did tell.
You gonna put me on there? My position?
What position?
I'm not ordering yours yet.
We got this one, this one, you know? Because my, uh, Chris is gonna have to re-run if he runs.
Um, any further discussion on the city election? Is the motion to order a city election?
Make the motion, or she's the next.
Makes the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Second, seconds, all four? All opposed? Mr. Cog, hospital's here, you have a good floor.
Well, I'm here to petition you guys to increase the subsidy to the EMS services. Um, I'm asking to increase from the current two thousand dollars a month subsidy to thirty-five hundred dollars per month. Uh, don't pretend to be a CPA, these are not audit operating statements you've got there, but I built a month-by-month operating statement on the EMS for the last fourteen months based upon the dollars coming in and the checks going out. And I think it's pretty evident there that pretty consistently, because of the policy change of going to a full-time paramedic, twenty-four seven coverage, and a long-needed raise in basic EMT and the paramedic pay rates, that, well, now we're just in a position where the payroll, uh, is going to average between thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars a month. There's just no way around it. And if your average payments collected are running five to six, and your subsidies are six, you're going to run twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars in the hole every month, and we pretty well did that. Last year, there were a lot of extra expenses related to getting the apartment ready for the paramedics to stay in, unexpected repair bills, uh, getting the ambulance back in compliance with the RAT group, um, but about twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, I think, depending on how you look at the expired drugs that had to be replaced and equipment and stuff like that. But, uh, right now, the, uh, we have about forty thousand dollars in cash assets there. Thirty thousand, that's a CD that I'd like to be able to keep there for an emergency situation and not get into unless we just have to. But, uh, bottom line is, we need to increase the subsidy to keep that going. The volumes do not, your collections just will not pay the cost. I mean, it's, uh, it's just not gonna happen, the volumes aren't there, uh, to support a EMS like that. I don't think we're unique to any other place in the country, by the way. Adling's EMS does not support itself either, so that's kinda the situation we're in. Uh, it's got to have more money to continue, as we, I think it would be a bad mistake to go back to where we were two years ago, where you're trying to run just a basic EMT all the time. I mean, I don't think we've got the staff to do it. I mean, we've got three ladies that are in the county who are basic EMTs. You, they would take at least six, I think, and five to cover the shift period anyway. I don't think that's an option to go back to the way it was. We need a director to stay in compliance. We need to, I can think of four or five instances where having a paramedic saved a county resident's life in the last eight months that I've been here, so. Going back is not the answer, but I also, I also understand that it's a hard pill to swallow to increase this subsidy, but we have to have an ambulance. There's some other expenses coming up this year, I mean, we need to, we're gonna have to address healthcare coverage for the employees out there. I am not able to do that through, carry them through hospital health plan, it's got to be set up separately. It's all kinda there in the report, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you, but like every other situation in the world, we need to have the money. And, uh, I think this is a needed service, we, well, we have to keep it going, we have a lot to do, but. It's not gonna sustain itself, and it's gotta be subsidized.
Did you meet with the county yesterday?
Met with the county yesterday, uh, they did approve the increase. So, and I can assure you, the hospital district will, I mean, they're gonna have to need to come to you guys for start. It's just a situation of a change in policy, along getting things updated, it just, just the raising the, uh, labor costs and getting it back in compliance, getting all the equipment and drugs on there replaced, and that's not a cheap deal, it's expensive to do. And we've had quite a few unexpected expenses with repairs as well. But, uh, we, Jennifer and I believe that we can stay within the budget and maybe, maybe show an excess at the end of this year. I did agree to give the county another update in July at that point, because that way we could prepare better for it and, you know, preparing your budgets for next year. I know everyone's got a October first fiscal year start. So that's, I did agree to give the update at that point, and, you know, we have a few months to prove that we can operate within that budget.
So the county did say yes?
County did say yes. Bottom line, if we don't get the increase in the subsidies by July or August, the EMS service might be able to pay the bills with the way it's going right now. I wanted to get in front of you long before that happened. I didn't want it to be an emergency, would need help today situation. We wanted to give y'all an update about where we're headed, and, um, if you looked at the operating statements I put together, you can kinda see where the money is coming out, and there's not a lot of waste in there other than, um, supplies are supplies and labor costs is labor costs. There's not a lot of extra going in out there.
Well, I definitely think we should do it, um, I think the ambulance service provides a invaluable service to our community, and definitely should support it all we can. I do have this item as discussion only for the simple matter of, we need to look at our budget to figure out where we're gonna move it, because this year it's gonna be extremely tight for the city.
Well, and, uh, the county got lucky, they had a FEMA grant came through that, uh, gave them some funds that they could pull funds through that panic, so.
But, uh.
I know you're right in the middle of the budget, and you've gotta figure out where the money was coming from, but, uh, I'd rather tell you now than we've got this situation coming rather than turn it to you after it's already come by hand, so.
Something that we've talked, and there are a few items on the budget that are available that we can move around and make it work, um, but we definitely need to discuss it, I think. Y'all have any, any questions for Andy, or, you think, what do you think, Billy?
I don't think I've seen the news for the, that sort of, sort of service. Yeah, freaking fun, but are we looking at just doing it until the?
We have to look at it as basically. A full, full year's twelve thousand dollars, okay, that's budget item. If he requested that amount, and I budget it, it would be twelve thousand. We're not at twelve thousand, we're at ten, okay? There is items on our budget that we can move, because they're not into effect yet either. They come into effect in October, so we can take that amount of money and apply it over here to the, we just have to amend our budget. That's all we have to do, but we can find the money. So, I don't think it's gonna be that hard of an issue.
Stephanie, you think?
Uh, like I said, I knew that we could probably find the money. I mean, we have stuff, like you said, that we haven't even used yet that we did budget for, you know, like that. And it, it's gotta be done, I mean, we have to keep an ambulance, because, I mean, that's all there is to it. You know, that's, you know.
Have a person gonna come and apply for a job?
I talked to her yesterday.
Did you talk to her? The intermediate?
Yes.
Michael?
I don't have a problem in the world with that.
All right.
Without them, you can add forty-five minutes of response time, I mean, what are they?
Okay, and I know there was a little bit of worry there for a while that the CT was, it, and it did, I mean, honestly, the CT did hurt the transfer a little bit, but I think it was eighteen or nineteen runs over four months. I mean, it wasn't, we went back through all the E and the run charts and, and saw where, you know, we kept the CT transferred at the hospital instead of taking him to Adling or something, so. There, there was an effect there of the hospital transferring as many patients, so. I didn't really look at how many the doc, new doctor is admitting patients right there and transferring them, so. So, there's, there are some other factors, I just don't think they're the, overall, you're looking at the average, you know, about one and a half runs per month, I think, what it worked out to be, and, you know, like I said, the volumes just aren't there to support it, and, well, that and your collections, I mean, what you bill out in healthcare is not, well, you're familiar with it, you don't collect that, for sure, so. If, if you collect thirty-five percent of what you're billing out in EMS, you're doing pretty good on your collections. I know that sounds ridiculous, but, uh, that's just the way parts of healthcare work, it's, uh. So that's kinda where we're at.
They can give me a couple of weeks, uh, probably let some of this other stuff that we've got going on kinda come to, to a head, per se, and then let me find it, and then we'll just kinda do it when we do the special meeting for them. I don't think we need to wait any longer than two weeks, so.
Can we have it done by February one?
Probably so.
And that, Andy, is that one that come?
County's fine, but I think the, I can't remember, I get the two mixed up. I know the hospital, we pay ours on fifteen each month, and one comes in the week before and the other comes in the week after, so, y'all come in with, y'all said, yeah, you got, as long as, I think yours comes in the last week of February is when we usually get the payment, so.
It's, it's when we do our meeting.
Yeah, we do the week of first.
See, I said, I'm, I'm looking at this not in January, but February, and we could probably even hold it off till March if we had to, but.
If we did it in February, then we could do the increase by the meeting in February. Should be the nineteenth.
Hopefully, we'll have better use for you than July when we come back, so.
Thank you, Andy. Councils payable, does everybody have a chance to look at the council payable?
I looked at them. I didn't see anything that was, that stuck out, you know, that wasn't the usual bills. That's a, like, a membership thing, it goes through the ADC, IDC, and the Chineball, I'll do that one. I need a motion to pay bills.
Stephanie makes a motion, Billy, second. All four? All opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, uh, everyone should have received a copy of resolution from those city council governments, um, in order to be eligible for certain FEMA grants, we have to approve, um, their hazard mitigation plan, um. Y'all had a chance to read over that?
So we have to adopt this to be eligible for any kind of funding, federal funding, if we have this, is that?
Through, uh, West Central Texas Council of Governments.
Right, right. But FEMA requires it, so, huh? Right, right.
If we don't do pretty much in line with what Cog wants us to do, then we don't fall in line to actually apply a grant here.
Right.
So, whether it be with FEMA or with whatever.
I mean, will this, will, I mean, if we adopt this one too, that therefore, you know, the FEMA requires the communications update too?
We've already done that.
All done now?
See, that's, they have all the regulations, we've already done all that, so this basically puts us in line to follow the Jones Plan.
It's, it's my understanding that we would be under Cog's umbrella and not directly tied with FEMA, where we would have to come up with our own plan, some of it's FEMA, and be approved, we fall under. Is that, that's the way I understood it, Sonny.
Yeah, make a motion to adopt it.
Michael makes a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second? Do you have a second? All four? All opposed? Motion carries. Second.
First, I'm gonna give y'all some, um, some of my reports first, because this is on my brain. Engineer was here today because there was a misunderstanding due to the amendments of the grant that we had. We had to amend the grant due, because we, TCQ was on us about our water tower, so we had to go ahead and get it fixed, because we never heard anything about the grant. And after we got the tower fixed, then the grant came through and approved it. So what we did was amend the grant in order to replace the pumps to get the water here. We were jumping there ourselves the last few days, because we were under the assumption that it was approved, and we found out today that it wasn't. So we have to do a whole bunch more stuff, and I've gotta get all the letter stuff from TCQ and reapply it. We don't have water here unless we pump it from somewhere, you know, we, it's, it's, uh, but if we were dealing with TCQ, they would understand that part of it, but we're not, we're dealing with people that, they're handling the money, but they don't understand the water situation, they don't understand how we get it here. So we have to take little baby steps, and here we go again. And if we can, uh, the engineer will start tomorrow writing a new letter, basically, to, uh, who's handling the grant funds, basically explaining that we don't have water here unless we pump it from Haskell. And that's the project we're trying to do, is to update, because we're in violation from Haskell all the way to here with our pump capacities, with the amount of water that we flow, and, um, that should be worked out. But, uh, I think we got a conference call on Wednesday to discuss more of this, uh, so Ralph will have to actually sign a. Uh, so Ralph will have to actually sign another letter and we have to submit another letter to them to explain why we're going this way, because they don't understand. But, anyway, that was done today. Um, everything else is on that part of the schedule. Uh, I was wanting, I, what I first did was, uh, a guy that did our roof here, uh, that actually bid our roof and did it, has a new company. And, uh, I talked to Boone, uh, basically doing some insulation of our pump houses. Uh, we use a lot of propane to keep them heated. And in the summertime, we have to, you know, do a whole lot of different things because they're just block buildings with metal roofs. And, uh, one of the deals was, was to insulate the bay out here, uh, so we'd have a place to work when it's cold, because we can't heat it when it's cold. Uh, that came in, the bid came in a little high, um, for now, but our pump house down here that pumps the water to the water tower is, uh, is an all metal building. And it's costing us quite a bit to heat it all the time, so I just wanted to insulate it. And, uh, he gave a bid of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And we have Boone in the budget for that, those things to do that, but, um, I need y'all to prove whether to do it or not.
Unless we spend a lot to keep it warm.
That's a good question. I know we filled up that propane thing already once.
That being him.
Yeah, this in here, up in there, right here.
And that won't last very long, because we basically just turned the thing to the point. But in the summertime, it will help too, because it, we have to put fans and blowers in there to keep the, the pumps from getting hot. And it's just a ten building is all it is. It should have been insulated a long time ago, but, uh, all we have to do is insulate the ceiling and three walls. One wall is, is a, goes into another part of the building we want insulated in.
Well, insulation would help, not there, the summertime, though, when it's so hot, they're holding in there more.
Yeah, but the fans will boil it around, out of there right now. We got so much heat accumulated in the building when it's hot that the pumps shut down and throw breakers. And so, I'm not insulation specialist. Somebody told me if we insulated, it, it would help on that part too, so, uh.
So do we need to go?
Now, Boone's bid come in at twenty-five hundred dollars to do that one down there. And, uh, I didn't even have it, that's been when they were here before. But they also did the bid out here for the, um, shop and it was like six grand compared to this one's thirty-two hundred. But thirty, the shop is not on the bill, it's just, just the pump house, that's all we're gonna try to get done, because it is costing us to heat it in the wintertime.
Three hundred, forty-eight dollars. And I wouldn't, that's the one fell out.
And that heater runs constantly down there, so, I think, uh, it's not a thermostat type deal, so, um. And we have to put heat lamps over the, um, cycle stop valves to keep them from freezing too, so we have electric bills too.
Michael, what do you think?
It's not too bad, I'll give that right there and pay for itself, that right there for your, uh, fifty dollars a month, that on electricity. It's safe for that pretty quick.
Seven?
I tend to agree, just like I said, we don't need that stuff freezing and breaking and that being an additional cost. I don't know a whole bunch about it, but I do know that we don't need it to freeze.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, it would be more costly if we don't protect it with two.
Yeah, the, you're saying bill three forty-eight and if that lasts, what, three weeks? Plus that fifty dollars on electricity, like I said, and if it's only, what, twelve hundred?
And those parts are how much?
Oh, I don't even want to advance.
Oh, we lost a cycle stop valve, you're looking at seven grand, so.
So, yeah. Yeah, just for that, you know, just for that building right now, like I said, this out here can wait.
Yeah.
Anything, motions accepted, bid from?
Close to accept it, twelve fifty.
Michael makes a motion, where, and where is that from? What's the name?
It's from Commercial Roofing and Restoration. It's basically the guy that helped start Boone, but he's down, he's got his own business.
How much was it, Sunny?
Twelve fifty.
Michael makes a motion, accepted bid, is there a second?
What second?
Seven seconds. All four? All opposed? Most cheers.
Oh, yeah.
Not enough for that.
Good shot, Michael.
Uh, convenience center, um, the pad and the bottom part of it and the wall is done, is cured. And we got some merit work to do yet, um, and some, and a wall to put up, um, but that'll be ready if somebody, if everybody wants to go down there and look at that. Um, I don't guess we got the bill yet, uh, but we did, we are gonna probably pay a little into that, um, because there were a little bit more of a cost. Uh, I think the IDC pays, will pay for thirteen or fourteen five, uh, so whatever it is over that would be, which we had some well plates that we had to put in there, uh, and they had to, uh, charges for those. And then I extended on the pad driving out, I extended it to the wall, so there's like maybe two or three yards of cement, which actually would just help us in the long run. And then we gotta buy some bumper blocks. Um, but it'll be ready for long to start using it. I already got the forty yard roll off there. Uh, and then, uh, I know y'all have already approved this and, uh, so, so it won't be a, uh, surprise. Is I, I believe we put a limit on our billing software till tomorrow. And if Tammy's not satisfied tomorrow, then I will make the change and we'll start over, because it's getting. I just did all of my, I've got my, uh, tier two report done. I've got my TCQ reports done, uh, for last year. Um, I have my Texas Water Development Board report done for the water use survey, and I have my water loss survey done. Uh, last year, we had twenty-seven million, twenty-nine million gallons of loss of water, uh, this year. Uh, surprisingly, we had about two million after we've accumulated and, and so those are the things that we did fix. But the problem is, is our billing program does not correspond with my stuff that we have to keep every month. Um, and it's nice to have the old backup on figures and they couldn't even help me. Um, so the only report we have to do right now would be our consumer confidence report, uh, but we can't file that or can't even look at that until February, um, towards the end of February, because all the data won't be in. Uh, but after dealing with them doing my reports, uh, it got just a little bit out of hand. And I've talked to them on the phone a couple of times, uh, and then this five minutes turns into half a day waiting on them to get back with me with one figure.
That's, uh, done, well, she's been having to deal with. Like I said, I don't think it's worth it.
Well, and this is a deal, as I called them and I cannot, um, you couldn't even explain what you needed without them interrupting you, telling you you're wrong. We're not wrong, we're right. Uh, I did, uh, receive kind of, um, butt chewing and, you know, it all flows downhill. Uh, so when I come in and we discussed it, uh, we don't need to do that no more. It's, it's gonna be fixed. Uh, it's not Tammy's fault and it's not Vanessa's fault. It's the programmer's fault and, you know.
Because they haven't been helpful at all.
And I'm, I'm not gonna go through what we did, what was it, Friday, Thursday or Friday? Uh, there's no sense in us having to do that, so we will change the, the billing program and, and just move on right along with our business.
Well, just like, he taught, when I talked to the guy yesterday, just so y'all know, uh, he told me, he said, call me, call me first thing in the morning, because I'm gonna work on this with programmers. I called him eight o'clock, he wasn't there, so I called back at eight-ten and I got him and he said, you made it here before me, I'll call you back in a while, hung up. I had never gotten another call. Vanessa kept calling him and calling him and they kept sending him webinars, they're doing this, they're doing that, they'll get back with you in fifteen minutes. She just, she kept calling him for me. And what reports they gave me, for me to do reports for y'all, which I haven't been able to give y'all, is the type, it's, they're so mumbled, jumbled, you can't make out some things. You don't know if it's water, if it's sewer, you can't, so I can't put an incorrect number in. I'm not going to put an incorrect number in a report. And so after today, they sent some more stuff after four-thirty, and I have not got to compare it to see if it's even gonna be anywhere near what they sent yesterday and the day before, or Monday or Friday. So in the morning, I'll work on it for a while and see if it's any better. And if it's not, I'm done with it. I mean, this is.
I have to keep these figures for TCQ, for the state, Texas Water Development and all these. When I get a report that says that I had produced six million gallons of water for the month of December, but my billing program tells me that I sold twelve, there's gotta be a little issue there somewhere, because we don't make water in town.
They won't even call the auditor back. I mean, she's tried talking to them, going through our audit and everything, and she's tried to even help us that way. They will not talk to her. And she, when I talked to her today, she's like me, she said, if you don't think that these numbers are gonna add right, then just, y'all need to make a decision.
I think they'll change it.
I'm, I'm, I'm tired of messing with them and then.
I would, it's really.
It really, I mean, because, you know, I've, I've done these reports for sixteen years and I know what I'm doing. And when I see that these numbers aren't right, I cannot, out of good conscience, give y'all a report that is not correct. And what I gave y'all tonight, y'all can take home and study, that is a budget versus actual. If y'all have any questions, all you gotta do is call me. I can, those are gonna be.
No, those are all your QuickBooks.
That's, that, no, that's just in, that's straight out of my QuickBooks.
Yeah.
Now, I do have a little glitch in my QuickBooks right now, and I was on the, on hold with QuickBooks people for an hour and fifteen minutes today. Got nothing, I, I just hung up. And, um, I'm working on that. If I can't get that done, I might have to do something different when I get through to them. You know, I may have to be on hold with them all day, I don't know, just try to see where this little glitch is. But, um, and it may, they may can tell me and they can work it just like that, I don't know. But it's, uh, if not, I may, and if, if going to QuickBooks twenty thirteen won't correct it, then, well, looking.
Sunny, do you have anything else? Does anybody else have anything else?
Do y'all have open forum, by any chance?
We don't have open forum, but if you want to even talk with me after, after meeting.
Okay.
I definitely stick around and listen to you. Like I said, we, we don't have, uh, open meeting anymore, but if you ever want to, uh, come and speak with us, we'd be more than happy to push you on there, Jenny. Michael, I think you made a motion earlier, you wanna?
That's a journey.
Second, second, all four? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, fun to the.
And when you get the phone, when the, when the grant comes, exactly, if that, if, uh, more than one.